All right, good evening. It is six o'clock. I'm calling to order the July 26, 2022 Fountain City Council meeting. Good evening. I'm calling to order the meeting. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Mayor Thompson here.
Mayor Protem Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Rick.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Present.
I have seven members present.
Great, thank you very much. That takes us to item 4.1, Presentations. The youth group that was going to be here tonight has asked to reschedule. And so we're going to go on and we're going to substitute that for a card I have from Brandy Williams, who'd like to come address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson, members of City Council. I just wanted to take this opportunity tonight to come say goodbye. I've definitely appreciated my time here, and I think it's been wonderful. It's been a good partnership. I think of all the councils in the region, this was the one that I felt comfortable coming and saying, all right, we can work together to get things done, both locally and regionally. So I appreciate your support. I'm sure you'll do fine. Ben is on his way to figure out how to fill out that city engineer application. Thank you, upper staff, all staff, for all of your support throughout the years. It's been wonderful, and just wanted to come by and say thank you.
Don't leave. Don't leave. No, I didn't mean it that way, but don't sit down yet. Congratulations on your new job. I'm sure it's going to be a great opportunity for you.
Thank you.
I've really, really enjoyed working with you. I think we've built a good relationship. We've texted back and forth during some of those meetings and this and that and details, and I really appreciate that. So I hope with your successor, I can work as closely together with them. And I would like to give a big shout out to how much work you have done on the railroads. When you came here, we were not moving forward, pun intended. And you have made great progress getting them off the stick and getting them moving. I have great confidence that your successor is going to take the last step for that last intersection and get that done. But what has been accomplished would not have happened without you just being relentless. You know, as the turnover in the railroad and new people and new requirements, and you just hung in there and kept it going forward. So I really, really want to tell you, I really, really appreciate it. And how we've worked together in PPACG, the millions that you've helped bring to this city for different projects. We need to keep moving forward that way, and I really appreciate you teaching me the ropes there and how to do it. Get on the list. If you're not on the list, you're not going to get it, right?
Yep.
So thank you very much, Brandy, for all your hard work, really making Fountain a better, better city, and, you know, helping us move to new levels. Anybody else like to say anything? Councilmember Duncan?
I'd be crying. I'm just so sad to see you go, but happy for you, you know? So you have to do what's best for you, and we appreciate all the hard work you've done for Fountain. I would miss your beautiful smile, all of your intelligence that you bring to the table. So I just want you to know that, you know, this is bittersweet, but we, you know, we're going to miss you, and hopefully that we'll be able to call you when we, if we need to. Thank you so much.
I've already told her I'm keeping her personal cellphone number. Todd?
Mayor, if I could, and I hope we've done Brandy justice in thanking her through the years and telling her how much we do appreciate and where she's brought our engineering department from, too. And I do, no one can kind of understand the amount of effort that she's put in, the contacts she's used in the entire region to bring in the amount of money that she has in grants. We hope that Ben's able to keep those going with Brandy's help. But she truly has spent a lot of hard work, frustrating times with things like the Fountain Creek Watershed District when projects were at the top of the list, and then the rules were changed and they end up at the bottom of the list. And there's nothing you could do about that. But I want to thank you from everybody in the city. Because unless you're in your profession, folks don't understand how much work and effort you've put in. And from the first moment we talked at the county, we wanted to make it a win-win. And as you move forward, I hope we can continue to do that. And as folks know, this is kind of one of those examples that we can't compete in a lot of the specialty areas with the private sector. So we understand that. We do the best we can to give the best culture that we can. But you're taking that back into the private sector and doing what's right with you, and you got our support 100%. And we do appreciate everything you've done for us, Brandy, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, anyone else?
Fred.
Fred, thank you.
Hey, Brandy, I appreciate all your hard work. You've been probably the tip of the spear for Fountain for quite some time, so I appreciate what you've done for the city of Fountain and your knowledge that you brought and the passion that you brought it with. So thank you so much. I know that sometimes we don't get that thank you, but I know that you have been just hardworking, and I appreciate that as just the newest member, one of the newest members here on council. So thank you. Thank you again.
Councilmember Estes?
I want to say thanks to, for everything you've helped me with, with the watershed district. And you have been invaluable for the city, but also for the Fountain Creek Watershed District. You have helped represent us so well there and helped get projects hopefully happening in El Paso County. And you've set us up for success, so I really appreciate that. Thank you, and good luck.
Again, I can finally say congratulations without crying, so thank you very much, Brandy. Appreciate you the time. Thank you. Okay, give me a second. All right, we have a report, Gordy McCormick, from the Park and Recreation Department, a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight I'll be updating you on our 2022 update and along with some of our goals that we still want to accomplish in 2022. So we'll start off with our parks update, and then I'll move on to recreation. For parks, we've installed new lights at the skate park. We've completed the irrigation around our pump track and the skate park. We still need a plant grass seed. We want to plant grass seed in the fall. That way, it can take in the winter months, and hopefully by the spring, that grass will look nice and beautiful. Youth baseball organization is looking to move here in Fountain. That's what you see for the club sport funding. We also have the Natural Baseball Club. They'll finish their contract with Colorado Springs this year. And then this fall, we'll be working to get them moved down here to Fountain as well. So we're super excited about that. We're also looking forward to be working with West, West El Paso Baseball Club. It's a youth baseball organization. Right now, they play in El Pamar Baseball. And it's kind of far for their kids to drive. Most of them come out of Rush and Peyton and Fountain. So they're looking at Metcalf as possibly being their home fields for next year in 2023. So we have to make some upgrades there. So we've been working with them this year and looking forward to possibly making that happen in 2023. It wouldn't affect our recreation baseball we're currently doing now. Lastly, we hosted the city branch cleanup that put our Parks Department behind, along with the Streets Department and the rest of the departments in the city. That was a big undertaking, something we weren't ready to do this year. Next slide, please. Our goals for 2022, replacing the irrigation at Fountain Mesa Park. The key to that is we want, we're working with Katie Helms and Conservation Trust. We're spending a lot of money on watering these parks. So Katie is helping us write grants to get some new heads put in over there that'll save water. Days like today where it's raining, those irrigation systems will shut off automatically, and we don't have to rely on human error to go out or a human person to go out there and shut off those irrigations. It'll do it automatically. Parking expansion at Metcalf, I'll go over that more in the next slide, as well as the Metcalf play structure. The Vitana Open Space Study, more to follow on that. I did a walkthrough with Kristi Martinez in planning. The area is in a low-level floodplain, so it's normally what we get. So it's going to be a challenge to plan something nice in there for the community. We do have a few ideals. We have the Pike's Peak Region Disc Golf Course. They want to build another natural disc golf area, and that might be a good ideal for that area. Construction of a park, the new Parks Department building, that should start in September and hopefully finish by October, and that'll go where the Lorraine Building is now. And construction of the Aqua Park Restrooms. That's pending on funding of the Parks Building. As y'all know, construction costs have went up a lot, and we got to wait till we finish that Parks Building because we need a place to store our Parks equipment and our Parks personnel to work out of. And if we have to go into that money, we don't know if we'll finish that project this year. Next slide. And this slide is just what everything will look like whenever we get finished. If you address your attention to the bottom slide, I'll start with the Metcalf Park Expansion. With the parking lot there, we'll be adding two new ADA compliant parking spots. Currently, we only have one, so we'll be adding one more to that. We'll be adding 13 new parking spots. So coming in on Ohio from the north, you'll enter in the north and you'll drive to the east, and all the parking will flow out toward the east, and all the exits will be toward the east. So that'll be great, especially with the construction of the new playground equipment. That new playground equipment going in there, we'll have some ADA compliant structures in there, and it'll be accessible from the parking lot all the way to the playground, so that'll be nice. The building you see right there, that'll be a great expansion for our Parks Department because a lot of our equipment right now is kept outside, and it's weathering faster than we would like. So this will save us not only money, but it'll allow our equipment to last longer, and we'll get better use out of it. Next slide, please. This slide is the challenges we're facing in our Parks Department. The biggest challenge is we're facing right now is our staffing issues currently. We're down to our Park Superintendent, one foreman we just started two weeks ago, one full-time Parks Personnel and a temp. We're authorized five full-time personnel, two part-time personnel, and three seasonals. And so right now, we're working with four people and a temp. And so that's why we're getting behind everywhere you look. The temps have been a godsend. We interviewed one last Tuesday. We were able to start that person on Thursday. So we're hoping to get more people from a temp agency with the city. Whenever we hire somebody, we're waiting three to four weeks before we can start a person. With a temp agency, we can do an interview on Tuesday, start them as soon as Wednesday. The last one we did, it was Thursday, so that's nice. Other things that are challenging is our well at Metcalf. We're still waiting on a strainer so we can get that fired back up. Right now, we're using potable water to water that park. That's very costly because that's the same water that goes into your house that we're putting on those fields. And then increase in vandalism. It's down from 2020 and 2021, but we're, to date, we're at $27,000 in vandalism this year alone. Kids are getting ready to start back to school, so we expect our average, or our average cost over the last three years has been as high as $60,000. So we're hoping to cap out this year around that $35,000 range for vandalism. And of course, cost of supplies, we're all feeling that. Everywhere you look, you see the cost of supplies going up. So for 2023 and 2024, we'll just budget accordingly for the cost of supplies and inflation. Next slide, please. And this is just a picture of some of the graffiti we see in our parks and the vandalism. The big thing is here is we just have to stay on top of it. If you cover up their markings, they'll get tired, and eventually they'll move on to the next spot where it'll stay and be seen. The biggest problem we have is whenever they go after our playgrounds and our basketball courts, the typical slide that you see, the vertical slides, those cost about $5,000 to replace. And the hoods that go over the parks, the canopies on those playgrounds are about $3,500. So when those get destroyed, we're talking a lot of money. Next slide, please. So that's all I have on the parks update. Any questions for parks?
Councilmember Estes?
Did you have a question about where exactly the new park building is going?
Yeah, where is exactly the new park building going to be?
It's going to be in Lorraine. So do you know where the recycling center is? So it's going to be directly to the north of the recycling center. That's used to be where they stored the sand and everything. So it'll be located right there.
All right. And are we seeing the vandalism in all the parks?
Yes.
Or is there one in particular?
No, it's not. It doesn't happen anywhere more than the other. It's just with the playground equipment, that's the most costly. So the spray painting, can of paint, isn't as costly as replacing a slide. So we, for the vandalism on slides and stuff, Metcalf was the worst, and that's the reason we had to pull that playground out of there is because we didn't have anything else to put in there while we waited on the new playground equipment.
I know you're super short-staffed, so one of the things people could do to help the most is clean up after themselves at the park.
Yes.
That would be really nice.
Yes.
But I have been getting some calls about, and people talking to me about, on the weekends, once the trash is getting full on Saturday or Sunday, it's not getting picked up in like a timely manner. So people don't have anywhere to put it.
Yeah.
Do we have somebody that's going around a couple, three times a day?
Yeah, we have an on-call on the weekends. So it's one person, and they're on a two-hour rotation. So they come in for two hours. They pick up at the seven parks that we have. And then they'll come back in. They'll pick up at the 13 parks, come back in two hours later. And so it's a constant rotation. But we can't afford to have anybody more than that one person per weekend. On the weekends, whenever we have big events, like when we did Thunder in the Valley, it was, I even came in and worked that weekend because we were so short-staffed. And it's just what we're dealing with right now. We're doing the best we can.
Right. So if people could, like, bring a trash bag if they're going to have a big party, bring a trash bag to the park and clean after themselves, and then just stick it next to the other can.
Yeah, there's actually extra trash bags in all of those trash cans. And even whenever we do our reservations and stuff, we even tell the people reserving our rotation schedules, and we'll leave extra trash bags. And we're like, if you get full before we get back, if you want to just take the trash bag out and leave it by your gazebo or your pavilion, whenever we get back, we'll take it away for you.
Okay, great, thank you. Because our parks are well-loved.
They are, they are, and that's a good thing.
And just real quick, the splash pad.
Yes. So the parts coming out of Canada, I don't know if you know what happened this year in Canada with the truck drivers going on strike and not working for the first, I think it was four or five months out of the year. We're supposed to get that part on June 14th, June 14th, or sorry, July 14th. Whenever we called on July 14th and the part didn't come, they said, sorry, we're pushing the date back. Earliest is August 14th now. And it came out of, it came out of Canada. And so I think what we need to do as a city, and something I've been talking to Todd about, is it's the same as any car you buy. The splash pad's never been serviced. I think we need to call the company and have them come down to a full-on service before our next season. Because the splash pad, if I'm not mistaken, is over 16 years old, and it's never had a full-blown service. And I think, I think that's something we need to look at budgeting for, for '23 and '24. That way, we can catch all these little problems that are happening year after year, too.
Well, it's been great to see the kids playing right out here in this one.
Yes.
Of course, today they could just go out in their front yard and...
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Does anybody else have any questions?
All right, moving on to recreation. The biggest thing we did this year, and the most thing I'm proud of is the recreation coordinator, is we got our flack football program back from Gridiron Football. For those of you who aren't familiar with that, I sold our flack, or I don't want to say sold. I outsourced our flack football program to an NFL company called Gridiron, and the agreement was they would pay us $10,000 a year, and they would host a flack football program here in the city of Fountain. Well, they kept up with their $10,000 a year and gave us that money. But then they tried to take all the kids and move them up to Denver, and everybody in Fountain would have to go up there and play. So thanks to Troy and his good legal services, he was able to get us out of that. So we were able to open up our flack football program. We partnered, recreation, we really wanted to help out teens with all the vandalism and all the stuff teens were going through. So when you see these partnerships, that's what these partnerships were based on, was how do we help the teens in our community? And I like to say, thank our public service. I didn't add them to this list, but the police and fire really helped out a lot. And hopefully, the police and fire chief will give you update on that whenever they do their updates. But we partner with Pathways Initiative. That's a group that helps teens. They haven't been in Fountain in about the last five years. And what they do is kids that are high-risk for getting in trouble, they come into the school district, school district A, our court systems, and they help kids that are high-risk. They try to keep them out of the court system, out of juvie, and try to put them on a right track. And the way we helped is we started these teen programs and gave them something to do during the week and on the weekends to kind of focus their attention, especially during the summertime right now, to keep those kids out of the trouble and focus. The court system, I'm sure you've heard, I worked with Yanira and Troy in trying to get kids that get in trouble in Fountain, keep their punishment in Fountain, so they can help out in these parks and help me clean them up and pick up trash and weed and things along that line. Also, the Quanis Club, South Division, they provided a lot of financial support. All of these teens programs were free. So one thing I had to do was go out and get sponsorship. Quanis Club gave me over $1,800 to help me pay for these things. And so now there's a City of Fountain Satellite Chapter of Quanis. I didn't know what Quanis was. The only thing I remember about Quanis was when I was a kid, I swam in a pool every day, and it had the Quanis symbol on it, and that's what they do. In Woodland Park, they just built a teen center in the El Paso County area. They gave out $120,000 in scholarships to high school students. Zero of those dollars went to kids in Fountain because Fountain's never been represented by Quanis. But now we have a satellite club here in Fountain. It's only four members strong, so hopefully it can grow, and we get more help for kids in Fountain through that club as well. And then DA'd allowed us to use their facilities again. They shut it off because of COVID, which is totally understandable, but now it's opened back up, not only for our kids' sport, but as well for our adult sports. Next slide, please. And then our goals for next year. We want to develop programs for, our goals for 2022, we want to really start focusing on teens and seniors. I've been here for about five years now. We're really taking good cares of our youth from ages four to 12, and we've really overlooked our teens. We even have adult programs. But now we want to start looking at our teens and seniors. Add staffing to support current and future opportunities, improve inter-agency cooperation, and improve how we promote and advertise our programs. Facebook is really starting to fell us now as the way people communicate changes constantly. Facebook is no longer a viable option for us to communicate, especially with teenagers. Teenagers, most of them don't even know what Facebook is now. Might as well ask them to pick up a newspaper whenever you're asking them to get on Facebook. Next slide, please. Here's some of the pictures of some of the programs we hosted. In the top right-hand corner, that's the Quanis Club here in our soccer event. They came out and hand out free soccer balls to all the kids. So they did a fundraiser, got money for soccer balls, and this group of people from Colorado Springs and Quanis of Pike's Peak, they gave every kid that was out there a free soccer ball. In that left top picture, that's the teen volleyball. We met along with the police department. And I'm sorry, chief, I didn't, I should have, I should have used this opportunity to add some of those firefighters and police officers that coached these kids and mentored those kids. But with the money Quanis gave us, we were able to buy every kid and do like an award handout raffle. And every kid that showed up, every teen, got a gift and walked away with something. One girl even got a flat-screen TV. And the bottom is just our, us back in Eric Gahn Elementary doing basketball the way we used to. Next slide, please. And these are our challenges in recreation. The first one is staffing, staffing program overlap and scheduling staff. Maintaining the current number of programs with one full-time staff member. So I've been the one full-time staff member here since 2017. We used to have up to 30 programs. I've cut it back down to 22. I want to, I want quality programs, not quantity. So I'm right now, my department, I'm kind of at a decision point of what I can actually run with one person and what I can't run with one person. And looking at our strategic goals, I really need to focus on that, like which direction I want to go, and that's just something I got to look at in the years to come. Lack of volunteer coaches to allow more kids to participate. Cost of availability of equipment is going up. Like I said, everything is going up, and we just have to plan for that. I would like to thank, there's two ladies that live in AYSO, Carol and Samantha. I can't remember their last name, but they ran AYSO Soccer here in Fountain for years. They just donated me probably over $6,000 worth of soccer equipment. They shut down the AYSO program, and they gave me new soccer balls, soccer goals. So that's going to help me out a lot moving forward. Lack of facilities outdoors and indoors. To grow our programs anymore and to get beyond that 300 to 400, 500 kids to participate, we really need bigger facilities in order to make that happen. And Fort Carson, Ventana, some other organizations, baseball organizations, softball organizations would love to partner with Fountain. I don't know what attracts them to us. But I've been approached by a lot of people to partner with them, and I'm very hesitant because of, not only because of our staffing, but I just don't want to let anybody down. And inviting all these people in is just more hours of work for us every week. And I put, the last bullet I put on there, at a minimum, I'm working 55 to 60 hours a week. And to invite more partners in, I think it's time we make that decision, whether or not we're going to grow, stay the same, or what are we going to do as a recreation department for the city moving forward? And pending your questions, that's all I have.
Councilmember Rick?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I do appreciate it. Question more for Dan than you, but it does relate to you. Dan, I know we set up Metcalf Park to run off well water. I know we have, are having current parks issues, so we've been having to use city water. Do we have a plan to water any of our other parks with well water?
Eventually, we would like to transition them all, but it's a matter of availability from, you know, wells that are, that are existing. So I don't know off the top of my head where we have existing wells that we could possibly do that with. But anytime we're looking at irrigation, we're looking at the opportunities that are available to do that with well water as opposed to treated water.
Okay, thank you. Scott, I would just encourage staff to keep working on that, and eventually... eventually have a plan. If we're going to have to cut back water here, if we can get the parks on well water, that would certainly help us. Thank you.
Councilmember Hinton?
This might be more of a question for Scott, but also it's relatable. I know that hiring is a problem, right? And parks and recreation is important to keep our kids off the street and to have that availability to do there. There are somewhere in the works where we, at some point in time, to try to get them at full staff, at some point to, to ease some of that burden, that workload.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. I actually wanted to point out something that ties into that. But I actually asked Gordy to put in that very last bullet point. That wasn't, that's not something he really likes to hit on, how many hours he puts in, because it's just something that he has a passion for. But if you've been around the recreation program, you'll see him personally there in the weekends, evenings, I mean, all hours of the day. It's, it's pretty impressive how much Gordy puts into this program. So he doesn't like to toot his own horn, but I wanted to mention that because I think most folks know that with all those programs that we have and everything we do in that recreation program, this is the guy, the one individual to do it. So the interesting thing is we're, we are fully staffed. The fully staff of one, and then an administrative helper who helps both parks and recreation. So one of the things that Gordy and I have been working on is putting together a plan for, really an assistant for him who can help take that load off. So they can really split that workload because you just can't expect one person realistically to run an entire recreation program. Now, he'll have part-time officials who will help out at game time, but they're not the ones responsible for coming and setting up goals and, you know, hauling equipment around. I mean, this is the guy who does it all. So we have to, if we're going to, and I don't even want to say if we want to expand the program. If we want to even maintain the program, we can't realistically expect someone who is an exempt employee, by the way, to continue to put in those kind of hours and, and still retain their sanity and continue having that passion that they have. So we want to come back, we want to bring back, and Gordy's actually developed, along with HR, a job description for that position. So we do want to bring that back and hopefully get some help so that he can split that load. So that person can work some of the games or some of the sports and he can work others and, and get him back to a semblance of an actual regular schedule. So, so I appreciate that. That's a huge issue that we've been talking about. And that is something that we hope to bring to the council fairly quickly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Duncan?
I would just like to say thank you, you know, piggybacking off of your supervisor. There has been times where you have opened up this building for the youth council on Sunday and leaving church. I really appreciate your dedication to Fountain, all around, not just to your department, but to all other departments. You know, you've met with the youth council, you, you know, they have back and forth of ideas. And I just want to commend you for your hard work. You know, when you were sitting over there, I was like, who was that guy with that suit on? Looking very dapper. So I just want to, again, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I really want to thank you for concentrating on the teens and the seniors. And that's, that's a big gap that I think we've been missing in this program. But, but the seniors are looking for things to do just as much as the teenagers sometimes. I actually had one of them this weekend ask me how to get more benches on the trails. So she's supposed to be sending me email. I'll be forwarding you. So.
I'll be looking forward to it.
Yeah. And, but thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you're doing. We, I think a lot of us, we understand, you know, how we're short-staffed and what's going on. And, and somebody calls me to complain. Sometimes I offer them a job, I offer them a, you know, here's a, would you like a job application, right, Todd?
That's right.
Just in your office last week, it was like, you know, somebody was expressing their concerns. And I'm like, can I give you a job application? So I can, we keep, we keep trying. So thank you very much. I appreciate you, everything you're doing for us.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may, I just want to hit real quick on the vandalism. Because we're painfully aware when it started, especially in the skate parks earlier this summer. We made a large directive across our department to really do mandatory park checks on all parks and hit the high vis ones for us that we could spot the crime in. So on average, since Gordy brought this up as an issue, we've increased our park checks on a bi-weekly basis to 150. I think it's had an impact. The goal would be $0. It's less, trending less. We want to continue. The other thing we do is we really took a very low tolerance for curfew tickets and have probably written more curfew tickets to juveniles this year than ever before as a comprehensive push to keep our parks and our communities safe. Secondly, and I'd just like to tell you, between you and Yenira, Gordy, you mentioned the partnership we did with your volleyball team. For me, it was one of the best things we did in the city all summer. I really wish the group of kids was here tonight to hear some of these things. And maybe they're aware of them and maybe they're not. But, you know, Gordy, I just know how hard you worked on that. And it was one of the better things we did this summer. Lastly, I'll tell you about Gordy, and Gordy doesn't know this story. This is three weeks ago before the monsoons. It was 95 degrees out. It was 1 o'clock in the afternoon. I'm driving by Metcalf Park. I saw a city vehicle parked there, so it always gets my attention. I want to do a check and make sure that person is okay. And I look around a little bit. I looked out in the, in the open of Metcalf Park and it's Gordy, the supervisor with the push mower chopping down weeds with probably a 1969 push lawnmower, I'm sure. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Gordy. But I just thought on that day it embodied what we want in Fountain employees, selfless service, leadership, commitment to the job, to lead from the front at times because we all do more with less. He certainly does. He's one of the best guys in the department. And I'll get with Gordy offline. If there's anything we can do to continue to help you, we're going to help you. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That brings us to the next item. Steve Schleicher, El Paso County Assessor, is going to talk to us on Senate Bill 22-238 and its impact on assessments. All right. Welcome. Thank you for coming down here tonight. Appreciate it.
How's that? Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. And I appreciate the invite to come down and speak with y'all. I also appreciate the free car wash that I'm getting right now. So that's very nice. It was bright and sunny up off Garden of the Gods when I left. And I came down here, I'm like, what in the world? So what I would like to share with you is hopefully make things a little bit more clearer in regards to a lot of the laws that are being passed regarding property tax. It's a very confusing time here in the state of Colorado. It's very confusing for a lot of chief financial officers, municipalities, El Paso County, City of Colorado Springs, City of Fountain, of what is going on. The other concern I have is also confusing to a lot of property owners because we're so used to Gallagher. And I will openly share, unfortunately Gallagher was voted out several years ago. And now what we're having is our government is picking winners and losers when it comes to property tax. And I'll share with you how that is happening today. Next slide, please. So House Bill 211312. What I want to share with you is there's also other tax laws that have been implemented that are going to impact the City of Fountain. This is a, a bill that I strongly supported. If you do not know, our business owners pay a business personal property tax. If you have no idea what that is, that is a tax on our furniture, fixtures, and equipment. So let's take a look at one of the restaurants. They're paying a tax on their point-of-sale system, their menus, their signs, their furniture, everything like that. I, as your county assessor, feel that's double taxation. These business owners already pay a sales tax on that equipment. Now they are having to pay a yearly personal property tax to El Paso County and all the different municipalities. Well, prior to last year, the exemption was if your actual value of all of your business equipment is $7,900 or less, you're exempt. So you are locally exempt by your county assessor. And I will tell you, that's not much. $7,900 is not much at all. So I actually supported and helped push the bill to increase that exemption to $50,000. So 90% of all of our small mom-and-pop businesses are now tax-exempt from paying personal property tax. Here's the good news. There is no impact to any of our municipalities, school districts, or fire districts. So it is my job now where I basically monitor all of those accounts that were exempt from $7,900 to $50,000. And the state is backfilling those monies to the municipalities. So there is no revenue change there. So that is a good thing. And this amount is actually increasing each year by inflation in the CPI. Next slide, please. So as I sit there and shared with you, as Section 1 of this bill increases the exemption amount from $7,900 to $50,000. And again, a lot of our small mom-and-pop businesses are now exempt, which means there's a lot here in the City of Fountain that are going to be exempt where they no longer have to file that personal property declaration schedule. They no longer have to worry about submitting that stuff to the assessor's office. And as I stated, this exemption is adjusted each year for inflation. The state now is required to reimburse all the municipalities. And I require the exemption list, which is going to be audited. Next slide, please. So let's talk about Senate Bill 2238, which is concerning the reductions in real property taxation only for years 2023 and 2024 property tax years. Next slide, please. So Section 1 of the 2023 property tax year, this is going to get very confusing in regards to how this bill was implemented. And it was signed in by our governor back in May, and it was rushed through. This bill reduces the assessment rate of non-residential property. Non-residential property is considered commercial and vacant land. This has not happened since 1982. The non-residential assessment rate has been at 29% for nearly 40 years. So our business owners have not received any kind of tax break whatsoever. So as I mentioned, it reduces the assessment rate of non-residential property excluding agricultural and renewable energy production. And that, that is going from 29% down to 27.9%. Section 2 of this bill reduces the assessment rate for single-family residential and also multifamily residential, which are apartments, our duplexes, fourplexes, things like that, to 6.765%. Section 3 reduces the actual value of commercial real property. This is something that has never happened in the state of Colorado. So every odd year in the state of Colorado is a reappraisal year. And this is where I become the most popular elected official in the entire county. And I go under my desk in a fetal position and hide. So what we're looking at here is next year is a reappraisal year. Once the reappraisal is done, we are reducing values on every commercial property by $30,000 per this statute, or per this Senate bill. In addition, is every home is going to be reduced by $15,000. This has never, ever happened in, you know, the state of Colorado where the legislators basically dictate to the 64 county assessors that you're going to go ahead and reduce values. Next slide, please. I will share with you, our state is, basically, they are pushing this bill as this is a property tax cut. Ladies and gentlemen, it's not. And in full transparency, as your county assessor, and also as a property owner here in El Paso County, if somebody says it's a property tax cut, what I'm looking at, and what I feel most of our citizens here in El Paso County are looking at, is my property taxes are X for 2022. I'm expecting to pay less in 2023. That's not going to happen. It is a property tax relief. It is not a property tax cut. And I will explain why. Although we are reducing values by $30,000 for non-residential property or $15,000 on single-family residential and reducing the assessment rate, what's not being shared is the statutory reappraisal process that has to be done every odd year. So here is the example I want to share with you. This is a non-residential property. So I'm picking up an office building. And currently, what we look at is a million-dollar value on this office building today. At the current rate, they are paying about $21,125 in property taxes. So let's go ahead and incorporate Senate Bill 22293, which we reduce the value, as you note there, by $30,000. We reduce the assessment rate, which is a 3.7% reduction in the assessment rate. As you calculate that out, as you see, their estimated taxes go down to $19,714, which is a reduction of $1,400 in taxes. Who wouldn't like that? However, let's incorporate the reappraisal. And we just got done with the study period for the 2023 reappraisal by state law. We use sales that occur from July 1 of 2020 to June 30 of 2022, which was just three weeks ago. And we have already started the 2023 reappraisal process. So let's say, based on the sales of that office building, the value of that office building over a two-year period increases 10%. So you increase that million-dollar value 10%, you reduce it by $30,000, and the rate reduced is what you're looking at here is the estimated taxes after the reappraisal are going up $621. This is what's going to be very confusing to property owners when they're being told you're going to get a property tax cut. Next slide, please. Let's look at single-family residential. I provided the same thing. Currently on a half million dollar home. And folks, I cannot believe I'm sitting here using a half million dollars as what the average value here in El Paso County is. I never thought I would see, because I grew up here, graduated Whitefield High School in 87. I never thought I would sit there and be valuing half million dollar homes in security Whitefield and Fountain, but that's where we're at. So half million dollar home, we're looking at estimated taxes of two, you know, $2,500. Again, adding in Senate Bill 22293, we reduce the value, we reduce the assessment rate by 2.7%. The estimated taxes drop $141, which we all like to see. But let's take a look. We increased that single-family home over a two-year period where we're looking at a 15% increase. Their taxes are actually going up $228. So this is what's going to be extremely confusing, as I note. Let's try to clean the fog here. As I mentioned previously, this is for tax year 2023 and 2024. So in 2024, Section 1 of this bill basically says continues the assessment rate of real and personal property that is classified as ag or renewable energy. Ag and renewable energy property owners are getting a less assessment rate than non-residential or business and vacant land. So if you are a renewable energy business owner, you're paying less in taxes than a business owner. This is where I'm talking about government is starting to pick winners and losers when it comes to property tax. And we're starting to veer away from being fair and equitable of what's being paid. Section 2, single-family residential assessment rate will be based on a specific modification determined by the property tax administrator. So this is where they're going to do a study based on all the sales, the 2023 reappraisal, and come up with a new assessment rate, and if they're going to look at the values. Section 3, multifamily, the assessment rate increases to 6.8%. Section 4, single-family residential assessment rate will be based again upon the reappraisal. And Section 5 requires state treasurer to reimburse counties for this loss of revenue. Next slide, please. Oh, next slide. So here are pros and cons. And folks, I will tell you, is as your county assessor, I supported this bill. Reason why I supported this bill is, one, we are looking at tax relief on homeowners, on business owners, which is a good thing. And as your county assessor, I basically want to get out there and basically start educating folks what is going to be happening here. But let's talk about some of the pros. Residential and non-residential property tax savings. We will see a tax savings, and I wish they would start using that term, you know, tax savings or tax relief, not tax cut. Lowering of the non-residential rate has not happened since 1982, which was the incorporation of the Gallagher Amendment. The lowering of the residential multifamily assessment rate is a very good thing. We haven't seen that. And property actual value decreases where we haven't seen that in the history of, of Colorado, where we're reducing values arbitrarily $30,000 for non-residential and $15,000 for all single-family residential homes. So let's talk a little bit about the cons. Next slide, please. Bottom line, taxpayer confusion. Mortgage companies, change of escrow. How are, how are these folks, if, you know, property owners paying PITI, principal, interest, taxes, insurance, how are they going to adjust their monthly payment? They have no clue about this. So it's going to be an education process. But what I recommend is our property owners could either call my office or the treasurer's office, or go online to assessor.elpasoco.com or treasurer.elpasoco.com and download either the assessor statement or tax statement and mail that with their next statement after January 1 of this year where they can make those changes. The 2023 reappraisal, again, just getting confused in the terminology of what a tax relief and tax cut. To me, those are two totally different definitions. And are property owners not directly seeing property tax savings? And that is what's being said by a lot of our local or state And that is what's being said by a lot of our local or statewide elected, is they're going to see tax savings. Well, it's going to be hidden. They're not going to be able to see that. Here is a major concern that I have, ladies and gentlemen. What happens after tax years 2023 and 2024? Those values are put back on? The assessment rates go right back up? 2025 is another reappraisal year here in the state of Colorado. What is that going to say for our property taxes on our single-family and our non-residential properties? It could have a major, major impact. I have a huge concern about that. Another concern I have is how do we handle mixed-use properties? Let's look right across the street where we're sitting, and we've got apartments on the top floor up there, and we've got commercial properties right below down here of mixed-use properties. Are these property owners able to take advantage of both the $30,000 reduction and the $15,000 reduction? The answer is yes. So with mixed use, so this is a very confusing bill, and we have a lot of mixed-use properties on the west side, in Manitou, downtown Colorado Springs, but these property owners can take advantage of both of those savings. That's something that was not thought through on this bill. Statutory reporting. As you guys know, I am now working on my preliminary certification for your finance department. So we are going to be cutting everything off in the assessor's office here in two weeks to start working on that. Get the information out there to you all, because that is due to all the municipalities on or before August 25, where you, as a board, start making decisions. And then our final certification, we always mail out prior to the Thanksgiving week where you can start developing your mill levy. Next slide, please. So what have I done? How can I help you? And what can we do for the property owners with all these new assessment rates, with all these changes? So council members, Madam Mayor, I put a calculator out there on the website where you can actually go in and just put in, you know, take a look at your property and put in what the value is, and that thing will sit there and automatically estimate what your property taxes are going to be. In addition to that, I built a spreadsheet, and I shouldn't say me, but my awesome staff. I would still be working on that spreadsheet, but for large municipalities, school districts, cities, towns, fire districts, is if you want to be on the monthly mailing list, is we are updating the data, the values, where you can actually drop down and pull up City of Fountain of how this Senate bill is going to impact the city of Fountain with the value reductions, what is the reappraisal going to do. So feel free to have your finance department reach out to me, Scott or Todd. I could actually put them on the distribution list and send that to them monthly to keep them up to speed of what's going on. Other than that, thank you for the car wash. Glad to be back down here, so it's good to see you guys.
Thank you so much. That is a lot of information. I think it's going to take some digesting. Really, really appreciate you taking time and coming down here tonight. Yeah, that personal property tax on a business was a pretty, was a shocker when we moved here. And yeah, get that done is, keeps a lot of finance people in business getting, helping us get all that stuff done, right?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor.
But thank you so much for fighting to get that increased. So appreciate that.
Definitely.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Mr. Schleicher?
Wow.
I said good or bad, right?
No, I just looked at the facial expressions, he's just talking about this going, what in the world? But at any time, please feel free, guys, I will leave you my cell phone number, and hopefully folks are listening at home or they listen to the tapes. But folks can actually call me or text me at 719-502-1534, and I'd be more than happy to help them.
And yeah, our doors are always open if you want to have a town hall or something down here, you know, you're more than welcome to, we can get that arranged for you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, we're going to go ahead and do the last item under Presentations, and then we'll take a five-minute break. So we're going to go ahead and have our Beacon team, Chief Heber, or not Chief Heber.
In the interest of time, I delegate it.
Evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I'm excited to announce that just over one year since myself and my partner clinician, Krista Parker, started as Fountain's first co-responder unit, I'm happy to introduce today Fountain's second co-responder unit. Beacon 4 is made up of a Fountain police officer and a UC Health behavioral health clinician. This position was made possible by a grant from UC Health. Both the officer and the clinician were chosen from multiple candidates competing for the positions. Today, I'm happy to introduce you to Officer Chris Dyawaker and behavioral health clinician Priscilla Pfeifer. But before I allow them to tell you more about themselves, I would like to thank the El Paso County Sheriff's Office and UC Health for the continued guidance, help, and support. Without further ado, Officer Dyawaker and Priscilla.
Hi, I'm Officer Dyawaker. That's pretty crazy to say, so folks at the PD call me mud or dirt, I'm okay with that, 100%. So I told you to come up here with a speech, because I didn't have one planned, but I will introduce myself. I've been in law enforcement for about 10 years, been with the Fountain Police Department for a little over four. In that time, I've gotten the honor and the privilege to train on some of our specialized units, one of those being the Rapid Response Team. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. I'm a few credits away from an associate's in psychology. I am CIT certified, which is one of the main goals at the Fountain Police Department now, is to try to get every single officer, sworn officer, CIT certified. She gets lucky to do that here soon. It's a great class, but, you know, I think this program is going to be a great fit for us. So far, I've only been working with her for a short time, but just seeing how she relates to folks, it's, you know, just really genuine, and seeing the small impact that we make can turn into something much greater in the long run. Like Gordy was over there saying, you know, sometimes a lot of our folks or officers are tied up on numerous calls. We're on one call and four pop up. So hopefully, by having us on there, it's estimated that approximately 70% of all calls for service are somewhat mental health-related. So hopefully, that's when Sergeant Owens and Ms. Parker and myself and Ms. Pfeifer can go out there and, you know, handle some of those calls to relieve some of those patrol units so that they can focus on other things going on in the city. So it's a brief intro on me, so now I'll give the mic over to her.
Sounds good. Thank you. I didn't have a speech prepared either, so I'll just kind of say a little bit about me. I just graduated from the University of Denver in June with my master's degree in social work with a mental health and trauma focus. I've also been taking additional courses for addiction counseling to get that next certification, to really understand the impact that that makes on mental health as a whole as well. I was born and raised here in Colorado. I'm originally from Pueblo, kind of whisper when I say that. But me and my husband got stationed here at Fort Carson, and so we decided to stay here, and he'll be getting out from here, so I'm not going anywhere. I have been with UC Health for three years. I started my journey in 2019 with an undergrad internship with health and wellness, and then just kept expanding through undergrad, doing part-time work as admin, and then eventually built up my way for internship for my master's degree with the Behavioral Health Department. And during that time, I did my internship as a clinician with substance use individuals on our HOPE unit, and then became a PR and behavioral health specialist to really focus on de-escalation and just providing emotional support to the community. I'm really passionate about this work, very passionate about law enforcement and the connection that it has to mental health individuals, and really aim to combat addressing the mental health crisis before anything else happens. So, yeah.
Okay, very good, very good, very good. So we're obviously very excited tonight. I wore my Beacon chief shirt just in honor of our team tonight. Already, Krista and Ken made a huge positive impact on our community for the last year. They have really been a blessing. I too have seen them personally work on scenes and deal with people in our community in crisis. And, you know, don't let the fact that our two outstanding clinicians may look a little young. They are fierce, they are good communicators, they are good de-escalators, and they provide our citizens a tremendous resource we did not have two years ago. Chris, when he went to CIT, Todd, in his day, we had a class called Verbal Judo, which was all about de-escalation, good people skills, talking, me and Todd were good at that. Chris, when we went, he sent him through, we sent him through, and our goal is all officers through crisis intervention training CIT. He was the honor grad of his class, graduated the top of his class, was recognized by his instructors. It's a week-long class, they bring movies, actors in, and they really role-play and allow officers in a safe environment, but very stressful to de-escalate and communicate at a high level. So kudos to them. Thank you, all four of you, for what you do. Can't say enough about our partnership with El Paso County and UC Health. They're great partners. And again, her position is grant-funded for the first year, which was great and really helped us bring them on to serve our community. So thank you very much, and I'm proud of you guys.
Thank you very much. I am so excited we're going to have a second team. I mean, we got the first one, and man, I was, Chris next week, need another one, need another one. So really, really excited, and thank you for taking us on and taking all that extra training, and I really, really appreciate it. I think we can already see the benefits in our community. People that are getting directed admits or a plan of what to do, or family members getting a plan of what to do. So I think we're just uphill all the way, so thank you very much. Anybody else? Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, this is great to see this partnership. It's well overdue. We needed this probably five, 10 years ago, but it's here now, and I appreciate you. You're working in the community. Not everybody needs to be put in handcuffs. They need somebody to talk to and to help them with that situation, and then the follow-on, the next steps after that. So I appreciate everything that you do.
Councilmember Duncan?
Just want to say thank you for being here, and your expertise in this is going to be helpful just within the last week. Personally, I have had a 25-year-old and a father commit suicide, so your services are definitely needed, and I am so excited that you're on our team.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in tonight.
Good job.
Thank you, welcome. All right. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll be back at 7:05. Okay, good evening. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Okay, we're going to go on to item 4.2. I think I have everybody back. Boards, commissions, and committees. Excuse me. Thank you. All right, Kristi Martinez.
Good evening, Kristi Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. The first item before you is consideration of an appointment of Mr. Robert Sanders to the Planning Commission. He would be fulfilling a vacated position by Mr. Gordon Rick, who had to resign because he was elected to City Council. There is more than six months remaining on Mr. Gordon Rick's previous Planning Commission term, so this would be considered a full term if appointed tonight by Mr. Sanders. Staff does not make any recommendations on board appointments, but Mr. Sanders is here tonight if you'd like to ask him any questions.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes, ma'am.
How are you this evening?
I'm doing fine, and yourself?
Good. If you could just state your name for the record, please?
My name is Robert Lee Sanders.
All right, well, thank you so much for applying to be on our Planning Commission.
Yes, ma'am.
And you are in the biomedical field.
Yes, ma'am.
You've been busy the last two years.
I've been really, really busy.
Yes, you have. Well, thank you so much for applying for that. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Saunders?
Sanders, please.
Sanders, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, exactly, like Colonel. Except I don't have his money.
Well, you better watch, we can start calling you Colonel. Mr. Rick.
Yes, I need to disclose that Mr. Sanders is my neighbor, and I did talk to him about this position before he applied.
Yes.
That's how we recruit him. All right. That's right. Thank you for talking to him, for coming and doing that. Thank you so much. All righty. So we have action before us if we would like to appoint Mr. Sanders to the
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Planning Commission. Planning Commission. So, Council, what would you like to do? Mr. Rick?
I move to approve Mr. Sanders to the Planning Commission as a regular member.
Councilmember Corey?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to appoint Mr. Sanders to the Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Well, congratulations.
Why, thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you being here.
That's it. It was real hard.
Right, right?
We can make it harder.
Oh, that's okay.
Give us a dance.
Life's hard enough as it is.
Thank you. And Kristi will be getting in contact with you about all the stuff to get you up to speed on that, so thank you very much. All right. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. The second item is for a second appointment to Planning Commission for Mr. Robert Carland. He would be fulfilling a vacated term by Mr. Corey Applegate, who had to resign his position to serve on City Council. Similar to Mr. Gordon Rick's position on Planning Commission, there is a remaining term, more than six months, so it would be considered a full term should the individual be appointed tonight. Mr. Carland is not in attendance tonight, so if you would like to move forward with that, you may do so.
I believe Mr. Carland was present last week, and he is the person that spoke so passionately for public safety. So, if that kind of helps y'all get a name and a face together. So, all righty, so we have someone, Mr. Carland, who's not here, so what would Council like to do with that? And hang on just a second, let me switch back. Councilmember Corey?
I do have to disclose, though, too. He, Royster Carland, did ask me, said, "What does it take to be on Planning Commission?" And I did give him email addresses for Ms. Kristi Martinez and Ms. Joni Corneal, so just we have that on record.
Okay. Councilmember Duncan?
Are we ready for a motion?
If you'd like to do that, yes.
I move to appoint Robert Carland to the Planning Commission to fulfill the remaining portion of the term for Corey Applegate.
Councilmember Hinton?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for Mr. Carland. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Got to switch screens. We don't have it. There we go. Please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right. Mr. Johnson?
Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor and Council. So, this item is for an appointment to the opioid Regional Abatement Council. So, to kind of refresh your memory, the city opted into a class-action nationwide, really class-action lawsuit against the opioid manufacturers. And so, those funds will be getting dispersed throughout the nation. The Colorado Attorney General is kind of taking lead for our state. And so, if you'll remember, the funds will be broken down, really 20% will go to the state, 60% will be going to the regions throughout the state, and the remaining 20% will go directly to individual municipalities or, and counties. And so, the El Paso and Teller is our region, and so, we entered into an intergovernmental agreement with them to participate in that region, and that's to really, to address and discuss the opioid mitigation for our entire region, because it really is a regional problem. And so, the bulk of those funds, that 60% will be spent as a council, as a region. And so, that intergovernmental agreement gives us representation on that board. And so, that, the item that you have in front of you is my request to be Fountain's representative on that board. Scott and I attended the first meeting of that Regional Council, and it went very well. It seems like a really good region that's really excited about the possibilities for spending those funds to help mitigate this crisis that we have. To give you accurate figures, we've got about, for this region, for the El Paso and Teller County region, the settlement for this year will be about $28 million that the council will be tasked with using to mitigate the problem. And then, our real first decision along this process is the 20% that we will be getting, many municipalities just choose to send that money back to the region to add it to the big pot. So, our 20% that we get individually is a little less than $10,000. And so, we can choose to whether we can just give that back to the region and then spend it that way, or keep it ourselves and report back to the state about how we've spent that. And so, that's kind of the first decision. I'm getting a little bit off track, but for now, I'm asking for appointment to that. Like I've told you, that, you know, my professional and career experiences have given me a passion for this problem, and I think there's some, there's certainly a lot of legal angles to it as the council continues. And also, looking at the entire council, the other representation, I think I'll be able to give some unique experience and expertise to the council to help us, you know, do really well and be responsible with those funds. So, that's my request, and so, I'll stop there and answer any questions if you'd like.
Yeah, I was reading an article somewhere this week, and some of the smaller municipalities are doing a regional approach, because they realize with $7,000, $8,000, they might not be able to do much in their small community. But if they team together, like we do regionally a lot of times, then they can do something with the, maybe fund a program or some, something, you know?
Correct. And it gets a little bit confusing, because regardless, we will have participation in that region. And so, and it's just, our question is, do we take our little slice and add it to the big pie, or do we find something, you know, right now, without having to go to the region to ask for that money?
But it's very restricted on what you can do with it.
Yeah, it's restricted to really abatement of the opioid crisis. Yeah.
Right.
Correct.
Councilmember Rick?
I know the answer to this question, but I just want to get it on the record. In addition to being an employee of Fountain, you are also a resident of Fountain. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. I certainly support having residents represent the City of Fountain, so I totally agree with this.
I do forget that sometimes. Yes, sir. So, I know I'm in the community. I go to the parks. I'm a part of this community and a part of the staff. That's true. Thank you for reminding me. Yeah.
Can you draw a map to get home if you need to?
Yeah. I'll find my way. That's all.
Okay. Mayor Protemestis?
Are we ready for a motion?
What would Council like to do at this point? Yes.
Okay. I move to appoint Troy Johnson as Fountain's representative to the El Paso-Teller Opioid Regional Abatement Council.
Councilmember Duncan, I believe Councilmember Duncan, yes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, congratulations. We gave you something else to do.
Yeah, thank you, Council. And I'll continue to have updates for you as the council moves along.
Great. That'd be great. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I think this is an excellent choice, just for your background and your passion. I was really excited that you wanted to do this, so thank you.
All right. Okay, moving us along to City Council Agenda Request. I'm going to start on my left. Mr. Rick?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Corey?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Protemestis?
Nothing.
Councilmember Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
And Councilmember Duncan?
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you very much. Next item is Public to Be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. The only card I had was for Brandy, and I pulled her up earlier. Do you have any other cards?
I do.
Do not. Is there anyone from the audience that had anything they wanted to address council for? Anybody on line, IT?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Then we'll go on to the next item, the Consent Agenda, item seven. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizens so request, in which case, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. What would council like to do? Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Okay. Councilmember Duncan?
My second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I got it right. I got it. I can't see this at that angle. Kind of do the corner-of-the-eye thing. The glasses don't see there anymore. Okay. All righty, we have a motion and a second for the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, and we have no old business tonight, so that takes us to new business. We're done with item A. Nothing was removed from the Consent Agenda. So, that takes us to item B, Resolution 22-041, a resolution assigning and transferring to El Paso County, Colorado, all of the City of Fountain's 2022 private activity bond volume cap allocation from the state ceiling for private activity bonds, and authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment and other documents in connection therewith.
That's great, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor and Council, good evening and public. Kimberly Bailey, Economic Development Director for your community. Yes, on an annual basis, the City of Fountain is allocated a certain portion of the state of Colorado private activity bonds, which are actually derived from the federal government. Our allocation, as you can see here in your write-up, is $1.65 million approximately is the value we've received for the year of 2022. It does fluctuate every year based on certain formulas that are generated for those allocation appropriations. Those bonds can be used for manufacturing incentives. They can be used for higher education institution funding. They can also be used for affordable housing, which is really, really critical in our state as well as our local community. Unfortunately, we don't have a developer that can utilize this appropriation of fundings under the timeline required. As you can see in your write-up, we have until August 15th to either use those bonds, which means you have to go out to market by that timeframe, or you have to decide if you're going to roll those bonds back. You can roll them back to the county, or you can roll them back all the way up to the state of Colorado. We highly recommending trying to keep these funds in our regional nexus, so we are recommending that these do roll up to the El Paso County appropriations, and then they can use it for an affordable housing product, and/or they can use it for a mortgage assistance tax relief program, which our citizens would be equally entitled to participate in at the county level. So, in front of you, you do have Resolution 22-041 recommending for council to move forward with reassignment of these bond issuances back to the county, and then the Board of Commissioners will use their processes in August to complete that process. Any questions you may have?
Councilmember Duncan? Oh, okay. Councilmember Rick?
Have we ever used these bonds? It seems like every year, we're rolling them back to the county. Have we ever used them for here in the city?
You are correct. We have not. We've had good projects that qualify for them, but unfortunately, even the $1.65 million sounds like a lot of money. The projects actually need to pair with a lot of other funding mechanisms to make that lift happen from a cost perspective. So, unfortunately, no, but we do have some regional projects that have actually used the allocations for affordable housing needs in the region, and so, they're not lost from a regional perspective.
Okay, I would just ask if we can encourage the county to try and do something down here in Fountain. We've been, if we've been rolling this money back year after year after year, while I want to help the region, I also want to see something come back to us if we could.
Totally agree. And Todd and I work really closely with the county on community development projects, specifically housing, and we are really trying to encourage those developers to bring that product to us, and how we can basically pair some funds to support those cost development measures. So, we totally concur with that philosophy.
And Mr. Rick, just to touch on it, the last project that the county did assist us was on the affordable side of things, and I'm not sure if they utilized specifically these, but they did go out and help them find funding for affordable housing, was the senior project up off of Cross Creek.
Yes.
They did get involved, and anytime we have a project like that, we'll reach out to them, and they've always partnered with us and helped. So, that's the last one, last year, I think, is when we opened that. But they did come in, and I'm not sure exactly if they earmarked these, but they did find funding to help with that.
Yeah, and that example is great, because that project, just like I said, the $1.65 is minimal dollars to support a large project, but that project used possibly private activity bonds, plus CHAFRA funding, plus some other regional funding to really make that lift happen. So, it's a valuable program. We just unfortunately haven't had a project come through the threshold to use it from a local perspective.
Thank you very much, both of you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, if not, what would the council like to do? Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, I move to approve Resolution 22-041.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Applegate, did you have something to, a question? Oh, your mic was still on. Okay. All right, if none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us on to item 10, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports. Mr. Traynor?
Nothing from me, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, it's road construction season, so Scott and I went out and drove some of the resurfacing that we've done. Fortman looks fantastic. Autumn Place looks great. Haven't been able to get down to Crest and Windsor. Haven't seen Southmore yet, so it's going on all over the city. We've also got a bunch of patching that's going to be done as well as on some of the digouts that have occurred. We're going to try to work the best we can with Black Hills. They are basically, their scheduling is what's holding up Link Road, and that's not going to be open before school does get going. We're working on getting just a one lane, 24 feet, that will be both ways open, but Black Hills is holding that up, so I'm going to get ahold of some of the regional folks, see if they can adjust their schedules. But other than that, Mayor, don't have anything.
All right, thank you. Troy, anything else?
Nothing else.
Chief Heber?
Just a reminder, next week, 3 August, will be city leadership OEM training here, conducted by FEMA-certified instructor. You're all invited to attend. Yolando will be here to do the support for us, and we'll be, and we'll have attendees from Monument and Green Mountain. Potentially Woodland Park will be in attendance for that training, too, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Dan, Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything tonight?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Gordy, anything else?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Martinez?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
IT?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Kimberly, anything else from your department? Is she still, oh, she's moved. You moved on me.
If you recall, we've been giving you prompt updates on the EPA Brownfields Initiative Program. As of today, we have launched a city survey. We encourage all people to, in persons, in our residences, to please participate over the next two weeks. It is in regards to the East Ohio property, which is in the east quadrant of the railroad tracks over here in Old Town. It's approximately nine acres. It's a city-owned asset, seeking to be revitalized through some public-private engagement efforts, but we're looking for the community to give us feedback on what is the appropriate mix of uses for that pretty decent-sized property that we'd like to see revitalized under this Brownfield Funding Initiative. I will say Councilmember Estes has been working with us on the working group, as well as Mayor Thompson, and so, we've had some really good collaboration and working up to this point, but the next two weeks is pretty critical to try to derive some of that public feedback. And this is the Lorraine Center for everybody that doesn't want to think we're Iowa, Ohio. I know. It depends who knows the acronyms or not, but we kind of went with the generic address, and it has a base map on that survey to educate you further regarding that particular parcel.
Great, thank you. Yep, let's get the word out about that, because we really need to get citizen input on these projects like that to see what they want to have happen in their community. All righty. Joni, City Clerk's Office?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing tonight? Okay. Councilmember Duncan?
Nothing.
Councilmember Applegate?
Just one thing, went to ESA this month, and we're lucky, our chief, our fire chief attends the ESA, which most don't, and we have a grant coming, and he will be applying for more, as they have more money available than they have requests for it, so it will be working really good.
And those funds are restricted to fire department staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Estes?
Couple things. The museum is having their open house on August 6th. There's free hot dogs, so we're mentioning the free food, and come take a look at your local museum. So, August 6th, that's a Saturday, and I think we're going like 10 to 2, 11 to 2, somewhere in there, but it's usually the usual museum hours are 10 to 3. And I wanna give a big shout-out to the Youth Council. One of their projects, they got involved in the community, and Mr. Max Lamb was interested in the museum, and he's now volunteering at the museum in helping us with projects over there, starting as an Instagram account, and starting scanning our pictures, so it's just nice to have those young kids over there helping out, and it's just, it's fun to see the youngsters participating, so appreciate that.
That's great. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, just quick, this month, I was able to stand in for the city at the Intrepid Spirit Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. The mayor could not make it, so I was able to stand in for that. It's a beautiful building, done by the Fisher family, and this is for those that suffer from traumatic brain injury. It is a signature wound that is caused throughout our wars, and it's the invisible wound that sometimes does not get detected, and it's a center that will allow the warfighter to get back in the fight, and so it was a great opportunity to be a representative and see the new technology that is happening, and that is constantly growing throughout as we, for our service members, so.
Thank you for doing that, thank you. Councilmember Cory?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Rick?
Yes, Madam Mayor, a few items. First, Todd, have we reached out to the schools regarding the road closures, specifically Link Road, that aren't gonna be open?
Yeah, they got our updates.
Thank you. And then, Chief Heber, we approved funding for a radio repeater in the middle school. I just wanna make sure that's gonna be completed before school starts?
I just wrote down this note as you were speaking, mid-August, August 15th, parts will be shipped, and we'll be up and running.
Okay. And then, lastly, just wanna thank the police department, been under a lot of pressure. We've had several incidents happen at one, at one time, we've even had to go out and request assistance from El Paso County Sheriff's Office to handle tier-one calls, because we have had so many tier-one calls, we haven't been able to handle them ourselves, specifically the ATM on the Chase Bank, so appreciate all the hard work and the long hours you guys are putting in, so thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Criminals just need to stay out of Fountain. You do, you get 'em. Yeah, an ATM. You gotta, you gotta give a thumbs up to creativity, right? You know? All righty, I'd like to thank everybody who, we had some people come out and help. We had a Care &amp; Share mobile food pantry at Lyndhamood Park on the 25th. I didn't get the final count, because we were so busy unloading the truck, but they said they have bringing food for 300, so based on guest-estimating, we probably had at least 200 people come to that, so that was great. We're gonna have another one on August 25th, so if you'd like to sign up to volunteer with that one, you just go to the Care &amp; Share website, and you can sign up there. It might not be up yet, but go back and you just drop down to the mobile food pantry. Great service, fresh food and stuff right to the people in their neighborhood, and they can just walk over, and if you haven't been to one of their mobile food pantry trucks, they just roll up the sides, and the people get to walk around one side, and they get to shop. So, you don't just get handed a box of food and stuff you might not eat, you actually get to pick off the truck what your family wants to eat, so it's very respectful like that. And thank you for whoever worked on the employee picnic, that was a great event, everybody seemed to be having a good time, so thank you, the food was really good. And cornhole tournament, who won the cornhole tournament?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, okay. Y'all had fun. Well, as I said there when I watched them playing, I hope our electric department has good eye-hand coordination, so that would be kinda scary if they didn't. So, we don't want 'em like this, that's right. Anyways, I picked this up at the library, I know we talked about potential of RTA ballot major, but their current 22, 2022 annual report is out, so if you go ahead over the library, they do have them right by the door, since it is something we were considering, it kinda gives you an idea of what RTA is all about, some of the projects they do, how they differentiate between the two different kinds of projects, the capital projects, which we would not have been part of, and then the getting the funds back. So, it's a good, a very well-written document, if you wanna pick one up at the library, and just kinda educate yourself on that potential ballot major that we will be looking at again next year. So, with that said, do we have an executive meeting tonight?
We do. In accordance with the City Charter and the Colorado Open Meetings Act, the City Council in open session is to determine whether it will hold a closed executive session. A closed executive session may be held upon an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the quorum present. It can, if consent to the closed executive session is not given, the items may be discussed in open session or withdrawn from the consideration. The purpose of the executive sessions here tonight pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024 for the purpose of review, approval, and amendment of the executive session minutes, Section 24-6-4024B for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions, Section 24-6-4024E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or introducing negotiators.
Okay, so we have an announcement of an executive session. Do we have a motion, please? I don't have the chart up here, so I'm just go with Mayor Protemestis?
Move to go to executive session.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, and the meeting is adjourned.